I thought in the meantime we could just cover some stuff about the high school and I'd spend a little bit of time just kind of talking to you about some things that you may not know that we're doing or some things that we've talked about in the past that I can update you on. For instance, some of these documents are about graduation pathways and different stuff which really dominates everything, every discussion we have right now. Some of that's been updated or we've made some progress in some certain areas, so as I go along, just stop me at any point and if you have a question like, hey, I thought it was this, or you got a question about this or that, just feel free. But I thought I'd just share a little bit about the building and kind of where we are this year on some things. So to start with, we did hire some new people this year, which you met at the beginning of the year, but I feel really good about a lot of, you know, I shouldn't say a lot, all of the people that we've hired in the last couple of years. We've made a point to get out in front of the hiring process a little bit, so a good portion of the people that we're able to hire, we're able to get earlier and that makes a difference. So I know at the district, we've talked about doing that as well and I think if we just made lists of like, who do we hire in April and May and who do we hire in June and July and who do we hire, you know, close to August? And I think who are our better teachers, I mean, I think we would see some correlation there. And that's not to say that we don't hire good people later in the process, but the education world right now, there just aren't a lot of teachers out there. And especially at the high school level when something opens up in science or math or in any of those, you know, high need, hard to find areas, people are picking them up as soon as they can. I mean, those people will have jobs by March, April, May and, you know, they won't even, and that's probably true of a lot of fields. You know, kids will, before they even graduate from college, will have jobs because people are out there trying to pick out the best they can early. And so education is just really, it used to be a hiring process that started, you know, when school got out and everybody spent the summer trying to figure out how you're going to hire teachers. And now people are just moving farther and farther up because there's just, you know, supply and demand kind of thing. So Jacob Austin, Special Ed, Alex Hillings, those are, hopefully all your chats, those are all relatively young teachers within the first year or two of their hiring and all doing a good job for us. Brian Powers, counselor, he spends some time at the middle school, you may know the Powers name, Jeff Powers has been here for a little while, that's his brother, he's done a great job for us. Matt Taylor and Jim Tante, we hired a little bit later in the PE areas, once Bob Posman retired and Chris Cole moved to assistant athletic director, so we hired both. Matt pitches football and Jim, we can go in here in a minute, I think it's worth, if you haven't been in here, seeing the WrestleMania event that's going to go on tonight. And the pack is pretty cool, so we can look at that setup. And Jim Tante, who has been through a lot since he's been hired here, is, he's putting on this event tonight, he's getting plates put in his head tomorrow morning and then trying to rush straight from there to watch his son play a playoff football game at Marion. And that's just Jim, like, so he was worried yesterday about how he's going to go have surgery to get plates put in and can he get them to let him go in time so that he can go watch football? And then I'm sure he'll be back here doing something for wrestling and so you'll have to meet Jim at some point in time if you've not met him, he's something else, but he just gets after it. So and then Macy Youngs in Essential Skills is someone that we hired. So you may know some of those people, but if not, you'll get a chance to meet them. Some of our changes, one reason us talking about this out here is we spent, I don't know, I guess the first year I got here, we really talked about how much of a mess traffic was around here and just, it was just unsafe. And so last year, we didn't get to it in year one to really make that change, so we spent a lot of time last year and last summer talking about, okay, we've got to make this jump. And with Jeff's help and Scott Martin and just different people that got involved, we just tried to look at how do we separate all of the different things that are going on at the beginning and end of the day here. So we have student drivers, we have parent drop-off drivers, we have buses and we have essential skills. And really, all of those at one point in time are just all mixing together and everybody's trying to get in and out of here and using the circle out front. So I don't know if you've been here either at those times, but I think we've got that kind of separated out. So now we've got buses, parent drop-off, both out here, essential skills is the only, buses that use our front entrance, which makes sense, it puts them right where they need to be. And then student drivers stay on the other end of the building. So we've, that's something we've implemented this year, which we've got some pretty good feedback on, I mean, we can't get around it because it's like any policy we have, like, there's just parents, people who go, yeah, but I'm kind of the exception. You know, they just look at a process and say, I know this is how you do it, but I'm kind of different, so I would kind of like you to do this for me, or I would kind of like to do this. So it's, we still have parents that pick up in the student lot, they pick up in the athletic lot, they pick up in the back of the building, could sneak out different doors. So that's not following what we want them to do, but it's, in general, the safety is really helped and it's spread all of that out. So we just, it's like holes in the diet, you just can't fill them all, so once you tell one person to stop doing something, then they go somewhere else and it just is kind of how it goes. We implemented our IDs this year, which the first few days, kids were, eh, so, so on, they had their little petitions to not have to do anything, but they're, they're kind of over it now, I think they just do it. And they have to use them to get in and out of games, in and out of the media center, they can't go certain places without it. And we're looking at ways to just continue to implement using that. So and the more and more we're getting the technology where I think they're finding it's convenient because they can just scan in and out, so they can scan their lunch, they can scan in and out of the media center, they can scan out of cafeteria, they can do things where it's a lot quicker for us to do that. And seniors have different ones so that we know seniors can go to their certain areas and if they don't, I caught a kid yesterday sitting in the senior lounge that didn't have their senior stuff on. And actually, it was a senior who was trying to trade it off with another kid and I just said, well, that's fine, but the next time you don't go to this anymore. So, but it's been helpful and we've seen things on video, we see kids in the hallway, just different things where it's been helpful to identify that they are in our building and if they are, who are they and what grade level are they or whatever's going on. So at a relatively low cost, that's been, been a helpful thing. So we've done a lot more building and lot searches this year, that's been in coordination with Jeff and just different people. We've had dogs in and out of the building, we're searching parking lots to make sure cars are where they're supposed to be. And every time we have, we've found things that were safety risks or things that we needed to check into. So and our SRO Doug Cox is awesome, he's been outstanding, he is just great to work with. And so having him here, that decision to get him here, have him here full-time, I think it took some time for us to figure out exactly what that role is, but I think we're getting there and it's been good and he's perfect for that. He's that right combination of like, you kind of have to be serious, but yet be able to have that, you can't be too joking around and too fun because there's a lot of seriousness to what's going on in our building. And I think he's that right balance of being able to do both of those things, so he's been great. And then he's heading up some of the processes for how do we do some of the searches. And again, the search stuff, just so you know, like, that's, that's not us like hunting or just trying to get kids. But every time we do something, the chatter just happens around the building, like, oh my gosh, they were doing this, or they were out looking at cars, you know, and so then all of a sudden, kids will show up and get their parking tags. And kids will start talking about, you know, turning, we did a dog search and really, we found one thing and that was it and that was fine. But over the course of the next couple of weeks, we had numerous kids just turning other kids in for stuff. Hey, so-and-so's got this, I saw so-and-so in the bathroom with this. I think they just, it's kind of like that opening to say, like, it's not okay to have that stuff here and we need to get it out of here. So we're not doing that so that we can catch kids, that's actually the worst part of it, is when we actually do get kids and we wish we wouldn't, but it's the idea that they know we care enough to be, to want that stuff out of you. And I think we were with, sitting with the older kids and one of them just made a comment earlier, he feel like, I forget the wording, but I feel like we're doing a lot to try to keep us safe here. So I think all of these things that we've implemented, just to showing our kids and hopefully our parents understand that we're doing it because we want to. It's a big building, it's a big place, sixty-some odd doors and people coming from every direction, like, we have to do as much as we can and stay safe. I don't know if you had questions about any of the things that were on the board, just terms of the things we've implemented or things you've seen or heard that might be concerns or?
Not today, it'd be really interesting that, I didn't think about the officer checking payoff posts. So there are plans, I mean, we can't really say when, but I guess that's going to be something we're going to do on a regular basis.
Yeah, and there is a process for that because we have to be very careful when we say, when we're doing, I mean, plan it in advance, but yet we can't let everyone know that we're doing it because then that, that creates problems in itself. So the one thing we did find out from the last one was, I think on a couple of different fronts, we could be ready to communicate, not that we have to communicate beforehand, but we have to be ready to communicate at certain points in time. So that we keep parents from freaking out and teachers from, you know, nodding. So we, after we did the last one, I kind of scripted out, okay, like, right when we're getting ready to do the search, this is what this communication goes out. As soon as we finish, this whole communication goes out so that we can kind of, because immediately kids get on phones, start texting, like, oh my gosh, they're, we're on lockdown, which is not really what we're doing, but that's how it gets communicated. And we need to communicate with local police and everyone, let them know what's going on. And we, our timing on some of that stuff wasn't great last time we did it, and so I think we're trying to get more of a script and just make sure that these are the people we let know, here's the timing of all of this. So everyone's in the loop and parents know, but know when they need to know and things like that. So we were, Jeff and I sat down and talked about some of that stuff, just things we learn and we don't learn sometimes till you do it and you're like, ah, we probably should have done that a little bit earlier, so.
Steve, can you talk a little bit about what you can and can't do? Because I've heard of like, mixed reactions about people who can't take the dog towards a specific background or anything like that.
We can't, we can't decide where we are going. Well, we can, like, as far as rooms go, it has to be a random search. So what we do is we put all the room numbers in there and then we really do just randomly select some rooms. Now, once we're in there, there's nothing, it can't, the dog goes where it goes and if it hits on someone's bag, then, so what we do is we go, we, they'll keep the dog outside. And once we've identified what room, so last time, I think we had three groups, three groups or four groups?
Yeah.
Anyway, so they brought different dogs and of course, they have their handlers with them and we have administration. So I think we had maybe four, four to five people in a group doing a room, so I think we searched three classrooms and outside cars, a section of cars. And those were randomly selected rooms, so that's really all that we have to do. And now we picked out like sections of hallways for the dog to go down through to.
Like block doors and everything?
Yeah, but once it, once the dog goes, like, there's nothing, I mean, what they hit is what they hit. So we go into the room and we just tell the kids, you know, you guys will have to step out, we take them to a secure location. Kids will start, they've got something on them, like, how do I get rid of this, how do I, what do I do? And so we've got administrators and teachers just kind of taking them to another location. And then the dog just gets in there and just goes everywhere and it'll, it just identify, like, right here, this bag, this is the one and.
It's safe.
I would say in terms of school, go with Christian way. Well, I was just going to say, what is it, what are we looking for, I mean, just anything like?
Drugs?
Yes, the dogs are trained to detect drugs.
Just drugs, like, if the kids have cigarettes in the backpack, they're going to have those.
They're not babes, it would have to have, it would have to essentially be heroin, marijuana, maybe meth, there's only, there's only a handful of things the dogs will.
From the school side though, we could search a lot, we actually have a lot of freedom in terms of, you know, if we think it's here, we get to go search. And so if we did have suspicion that, hey, it's in the parking lot, then Jeff can signal, hey, we need to get the dogs here, we have that right to go search that. Doug Cox can also go help us with the search, even though he's a police officer, because he's us. So I think that's one of the things people don't realize, like, they start to, you know, get searched or whatever.
Which is one reason we do keep the police out of most of what we do, because we have a little bit more freedom.
Well, the police, we had prosecutor, when Brad was prosecutor, Brad had a very interesting perspective on the police's role in our home. I will tell you, at the national level though, at the state level, the officers, as long as they are with us, they can do it. You know, well, here's an example, this came out in the meeting the other day, the school safety. Let's say a kid blocked at parks over at Brannigan because Steve's banning him from the parking lot. Well, we know that he may have drugs, so there's a reason to think that he could have that here, he comes in high or whatever. Can we go search the car at Brannigan? Absolutely, we can. We can go to that car and search it and if there's something in there that related to harming us or whatever, that's where we are. And a lot of people think, oh, they can't help you with that, we could definitely do that. And our side, I always say, we want to think about the safety side, once we know that it's going on, Jeff and Steve identified it, I call the board president and say, hey, here's what's going on. So he actually knows maybe a day or two ahead of everybody else, like, in this, this last scenario, I think it was like Thursday or Friday when we were going to do it early in that week. And then within the hour before it's going to get going, I'll email everybody else. So you all will know, like, hey, this is what's going on. We had an incident several years ago where it got out and it was, it was a little bit of stress on getting outside, that we didn't want to do. So we have stopped that protocol, so they worked on their side of communication and my job was to get to board president and then let you all know.
So even in that scenario, like, even if a dog, you know, hit on an area and there's a couple of bags there, like, if we would have, we would be able to search all of that. Now, we, the kids involved in that, like, so what we ended up doing is, you know, if it would hit on a bag, we'd identify whose bag it was, we would get that kid, we'd go down, we'd have two, maybe three administrators there and then we'd just go through the bag. And, you know, it's, it can also be, a lot of times they'll hit on things where it's been there, but it's not there. So they'd do the same thing on cars, like, it could have been in that car weeks ago or, I mean, the dog, it's a pretty acute, you know, smell for them, but it's, so a lot of times we get that and there's nothing there. But it's been there, they've had it there at some point in time, it's been in the car. And again, the goal's not to, we're searching, I mean, we want to make sure that it's not there, but at the end of the day, we're not like, oh, shoot, we wanted to get somebody today, like, that's not it at all. You know, it's the message we're trying to send, that it doesn't need to be here, we're going to be looking for it, it's, you know, so really, that's what we're trying to get out of it and, you know, then if it's here, then we deal with it. But there's a lot of times where it's hits and it's, there's not anything there and that's, that's not unusual, so.
Sometimes the kids will start investing right there, they'll tell you, this is what's in there and here's where it's at, or, you know, the sword's out in the car. So when you've had those false positives, have you had any problems with parents?
Same thing as before, if we run into issues, it's communication, it's, we, you know, unfortunately, we have had times where, we have, I mean, if we search anything, that would go for during the day. If somebody reports and says, I saw so-and-so with this in the bathroom, you know, we're going to have them come in, you know, okay, pull out your pockets, you know, show us what's in, you know, is there anything in there? I mean, it's, it's just a light general search, but it's like, you know, you have anything in your pockets, do you have anything, what's going on, what's in your back pockets? Like, and, you know, we don't touch them and we don't search them, but they, you know, we can ask them to pull their pockets out and we can ask them to do things like that. And, and so we'll have to tell kids, like, I'm sorry, like, we're doing this, but it's been reported and we have to look into it and see what's out there, show us your bookbag, we'll go through your bookbag. And probably ninety percent of the time, there's not anything there, but we should be then calling the parents immediately saying, look, this was what was reported, we went through their bookbag, we had them empty their pockets, we didn't find anything, but when it's reported. And typically, parents are not upset with that, that, you know, they, but if we don't communicate, which I would be as well as a parent, and unfortunately, sometimes things happen and we don't get to them. Again, kids will text, so they might walk right out the door and be like, just got searched in the office, well, then the call, you know. So sometimes the timeliness, like, we don't even have a chance to be like, well, we're getting ready to call you and tell you that, like, sometimes. But we try to be, you know, we just have to be really careful about when we search, communicating openly and telling them right away, here's what we did and here's why we did it. And usually, parents are not upset with that, it's just, if it's the next day or if it's many hours later, you know, we've just got to make sure we do a good job of communicating that out. So that's where we run into the issues, when we don't communicate the way that a parent would want. And sometimes those expectations are valid and sometimes they're not reasonable. I mean, if they walk out and they text their parent right away and they call in, you know, and this is three minutes after we just searched them, like, I'm sorry, but like, sometimes you can't do it, you know, at that very moment. So, good question, I mean, anything else on, on some of the stuff that we've done or role of our SRO or safety or any of those things?
Honestly, the last thing on search is, it is really amazing, the authority that we have, you know, in scenarios. So let's say, like Steve said, he heard someone had, if this were a classroom, we could search all of us. And, you know, Brooke's mom can't get mad, even though Brooke, Brooke didn't have anything to do with it. And here's the other thing, I'm glad that we don't do this, you can strip search kids. Now, I'm really glad that we don't, the conference I went to the other day, a lady said, vaping's a big deal right now, right? They, and they use the wands to identify where that is and then the girl had it, well, in her underwear and I was like, okay, listen, just, when she refuses not to give it to you, just try to refer to some ordination and a lot. But I really appreciate that we, we give honor to that and communicate that out because it just causes so much stress on life, if we have another perspective on that. So I think that Jeff and Scott, Steve have done a nice job of, here's, here's the material parameters that we have this.
Plus, if there are any questions there, then the rest of this really just involves the, kind of where we are academically, master schedule-wise, goal-wise. We have our district goals that we are still working through, so curriculum-wise, that's really where we've been hitting hard right now. We're working through our essential learnings, trying to get all of our courses to put some time and energy and effort into figuring out, yes, we have a whole lot of stuff we need to teach, but what's most critical in those, those classes? And some of our lower, earlier buildings have done all of this and we've never really coordinated that K-12 and I think we're getting closer to do that. It's not an easy thing for high school teachers to want to vertically align. Sometimes they start to teach and they really want to teach their subject and their material and the way they want to teach it, they don't really see that connection between, well, what if we were aligned with the middle school and if we were aligned with the intermediate building and how does all that stuff go together? And so some of those conversations are, have been really positive and then we've had pushback on some of it. We've had some teachers just not very happy with, you know, seeing it as a waste of their time to have to sit down and talk to teachers about why, how does my math relate to science or how does my social studies relate to English and how do those? You know, but we're having those conversations now, with the help of Brooke, all of our instructional coaches have been huge in that. We spent a whole day here where the instructional coaches around the district came over and helped us do that. So we have another one of those days coming up in January and then one in April where we're trying to get through all of our courses. Because we have close to 160 different courses that we teach, so when you talk about getting through that for each of those courses, it really has to be well-planned and efficient. And, you know, if we're wasting time, that'll take forever to get through all of that stuff. So the bottom two, really, what we're looking at in terms of our district goals, you know, these two things, instructionally, we continue with evaluations, talking about good instruction, but really trying to figure out where those two fit in once we have our curriculum. You know, we kind of need to know what we're teaching and how we're going to teach that, not to say that they don't know what they're teaching, but, you know, revise it, go through it, make sure it's what we want. And then we can talk about, you know, where does literacy fit into some of those things, where, you know, how are we instructing that? So we're still sticking to those three goals, it's just that curriculum's really our focus right now, taking a lot of our energy there, so. So our goals for this year, the first goal is we are reassessing and modifying the essential learnings. So last year, we went through, and it was a whole year just to get our teachers to create essential learnings, like, we didn't, some areas had them, but they weren't, hadn't been looked at forever. Some, they didn't exist at all, that's one thing, when I got over here, I realized is we, we had certain areas that just didn't even have stuff there for what, you know, they just kind of taught what they taught. And what the book or what the state might say they should be teaching, they just kind of looked at it and said, well, okay, this is what I'm teaching, how do I want to teach this? And we're really saying, no, look at it first, figure out what's most important, what connects to other subjects or what connects to the next, you know, course in the sequence and then build your curriculum. So we really had to start almost from step one with a number of subjects and a lot of those are subjects that aren't state mandated. I mean, math and English have been told forever exactly what they have to teach, how they have to teach it, how they're going to be tested, all just kind of, so, but our other subjects haven't been used to that. So they've been, if you go into a history class, it's kind of been like, okay, here's, you know, 600 years of history, what is it I want to teach and how do I want to do this? And we're really trying to get them all to get on the same page about with that stuff. So last year, we at least finished the year, we at least finished the year with everybody having something. So we said step one was have something, now whether it's the perfect something is what we'll deal with later, but if we don't have something, if you have to put some thought into what this would be, we have nowhere to start from. So we did get to that point at the end of last year, Melissa McCain was really big on getting all of that in place and organizing all of it. So then the start of this year was just, now we're going to go through the process, the district process, we're figuring out whether that is, you know, just kind of modifying it, making sure that that's really getting finalized. And we're on our way to doing that and that's a process we went through with Brooke and our instructional coaches, so that we're in that. So we're really, goal one, we will, we are on pace to get that done. Now, every year, it'll be something we keep reevaluating and talking about, but to listen to them, sit in a, in a math group and talk to science teachers about, well, we covered this in chemistry and they need to be able to do this in, you know, physics. And, you know, so those are the conversations that are going on, like I said, that have been welcomed by some of them more than others, but it's good, good conversation. And eventually, we're looking to develop our curriculum, maths and sequencing, so just things that teachers kind of do, but don't have down. And every time a teacher leaves, then their curriculum walks out with them. And then the next teacher, you know, we have a young teacher, first-year teacher walk in and that forty-year veteran or twenty-year veteran just walked out the door and they walked out with everything that they taught. And so this new person's coming in, like, okay, what am I going to teach, how am I going to teach this? And what we would like to be able to do is have this first-year teacher walk in and say, hey, here's how we do chemistry at Frankfurt, like, here's what this, you know, we've had in place for a while and this is how it needs to be taught. And, you know, modify it, make it your own, but this, you've got to teach this and we're getting there. I think that's easier at third grade or fifth grade, once they get mapped out to say, you know, here's what we do in third grade, here's what we do in fourth grade. And it's that whole district vertical alignment, so we're just trying to see how that, how we can get that in place at the high school. Because where we've really struggled is the transition, we lose teachers for different reasons, they move places, they go do different things, we talked about that before. But we can't have people leaving and then just walking out with everything that we do in that program and somebody else coming in and us just not having an idea what we're doing. So this is the, this is the process that we're following, we followed this in September, so this was our September PD day. So that was a day that we, we did, oh gosh, we talked, we had one station that they went to auditorium and they went over, met with our SROs, Jason Heinemann and Doug Cox and Cass Sarls and Scott Martin. Talked to them about vaping, about just building safety, about searches, so it was an entire meeting on just safety within the building. We had our counselors, Brian Powers kind of led that group, but they talked about harassment, bullying, suicide prevention and just spent that time with them there. And so we had some different things planned out, we turned it into like an e-learning day, I don't know if you remember that, you know. So on the educational side, they were kind of given, they came to the building, we did, it wasn't an e-learning day, but they had their assignments. And when they weren't in one of those groups, they were kind of working on those assignments that were through Google Classroom or doing whatever, while we were able to get some other things around the building. So there were several things that we would normally do, we had a senior meeting, just a lot of different things that we did that day in a kind of an abnormal learning environment. But at the same time, we were able to then pull teachers in for PD so that they could start going through some of this curriculum stuff we had with essential learnings. We're doing the same thing in January, but we're going to have like a convocation that we have to start the second semester where we'll recognize all of our clubs and groups and athletic teams and so that'll be one of them. We're going to have all four of our class meetings during that time, so our senior meeting on graduation, we'll talk to sophomores, juniors and freshmen about graduation pathways. So we're getting, doing the same thing. the same thing. We're planning another day where all of these things we pick apart and mess up the schedule six different times to try and get these different things done. We're doing them all in one day. So the kids will again come in, I think it's January 17. It'll be like an e-learning day. So again, teachers will give them their assignments for the day. So when they're not in one of those sessions, they'll have time to work, but then they'll be going to, you know, like a senior class meeting, a safety meeting, our building convocation. So we're planning all of those things out. So that's this round two. That, that's when we'll go through social studies and science and business. Teachers again will be in to do some of that stuff. And then round three is actually a day where we won't have to bring the kids in. We have the e-learning day on Prom Friday that's on our calendar. And so the kids won't be in, but then the teachers will be in and that'll be PD for them all day. So we'll be able to do that without the students. And then we won't have this line of kids running out the door to go get ready for prom. So, but the same thing, it'll be an e-learning day. That'll be an actual e-learning day for the high school students on that day. So I don't have good questions about any of the essential learning stuff or the curriculum profits. I don't know how much of that made sense to you, but we've been trying to find creative ways for all these teachers to spend time with our instructional coaches and administrators and each other while still getting the kid, and not sending the kids home. You know, they're here and we're, we're getting a lot of valuable stuff done during that day. It's a lot of planning, but Ray Lane, Melissa McCain, Laura Maddox, those are the people really the brains behind trying to figure out how everybody goes where. Yeah, well, you can go back to that one again. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about accountability piece, but I think there's things that we can pull from that. And I'm going to share it with the staff because I don't, they're, we're going away from my step anyway. So it's, it's really a measure that's, that's going to be gone in another year anyway. But I think the key for us has just been growth. Like we, even when I was at the middle school, we talked about, really it's about student growth. And the state doesn't really want to get, they want that measure in there, but they don't really want it to be that measure. Because as soon as you get away from pass rate and you go to student growth, you get away from your, your top schools being your top schools. And I don't know if, we met at the middle school back when we kind of started looking at that growth measure and the state started to put that in there into the accountability measure. And then at one point at the middle school, we were like a four-star school. And then that was a year where like some of your Hamilton County schools were not four-star schools and, you know, things like that. And then they changed it. They're like, okay, let's change it. Got to change it. Like this isn't what we're wanting. So they took away the growth measure and brought it back down, put the pass rate. Because if we're going to measure by pass rate, we're, that's a, that's a socioeconomic measure for the most part. If you do growth, now you're leveling the playing field and we don't really want to do that. That's my editorial comment. But, but so they, they, they overshot the growth measure. Well, when they did that, then all of a sudden, like we look pretty good because we're, that growth measure, you know, you start looking at our bottom 25%, bottom 50%. Our kids are growing, like we are growing kids. But if that measure is way up top, it's going to be hard for most of the state to hit that pass rate because that's really a socioeconomic measure. But, you know, not in pool, but for the most part. So when we look at our school letter grade here at the high school, that's where we've been the last four years, kind of moving that up. And we just missed getting an A this year. Scott, just walked in back there, Scott Martin, he does all of the work, the tracking, the, he spent all day yesterday with a flood of kids going in and out of his office that he just meets with constantly. Like, you're not on track to graduate, you're not on track to graduate, you need to be doing this. What are you doing? What's your plan? What's your grades? And he just does that all the time. Just calls kids down. So there's a measure of this is graduation, you know. So there are different measures, not just growth. But if you go to the next one, this is where you can look at our pass rates. And we've shown some improvement in pass rates, but these are basically state averages. And so we fall roughly around the state average every time. So if the measure is pass rate, we end up about where the state average of pass rate is. So this is the state pass rate of the math test. And that's about the state. We're above a little bit in language arts. This year, we were a little bit below, the year before we were a little bit above. But this is what you would see pretty consistently across the state. With the exception of, you'll see, you know, karma will be 80%, 85% or 70% here. But, you know, that's, if that's what we're trying to measure, then, then good for them. But if we go to growth, which is the next one, that's where we, that's where we start to see our numbers. And that's where we almost got to be an A is because if you look at our growth measures and what we're doing with our kids, they just grow. We had a little bit of a, a down here this year, but you can see where some of the numbers have gone, you know, just over time with, those are the amount of points, growth points that we got in those areas. So we went, in the last three years, we've gone from here to here. And you can just look at where, as time goes on and we start to, we brought IXL into the process. We've tried to make some steps where it's like, how do we help these kids grow? What do they need to get better at some of these skills? And, and so what we see is in these bottom, really this bottom 25%, we made a huge jump the year before here. And then we came down a little bit. But, I mean, those are, those are pretty big jumps in the growth. And then on the last one, as far as the accountability, or the next slide, the accountability letter grade point, that's where we've gone from growth points in the system. So you saw that 89, this is how much of that 89.3% is just from growth. And so that's the measure that just keeps going up and going up. And that's what we're really targeting is how are we growing kids? And all the state wants to look at, or all the paper wants to look at is pass rate. So they throw pass rate out and they just say, well, here's this school and here's their pass rate. But, you know, they're not going to throw the measures that are out there that really do impact that letter grade. But that's not really what we want to talk about. We want to throw the pass rate out there. So I don't, I don't talk with the staff too much about this because in some ways it's, it's not really what we're after. But I'll bring it up and turn, I will show them the growth because what we've been talking about is how do we grow kids? How do we get them to keep getting better? We just have more kids that start here and go here than we have kids that are here and go there. And so, you know, you're, you're at a little bit of a disadvantage if you err on that too much anyway.
So, so don't you think that we, the press pushes the pass rate because that's what the public attention is? Right? So how can we start educating the parents on that growth rate and what it means? Right? So then we could come into the community and say, you know, yes, we've got a pass rate, but here's our growth rate. And they, at least the community understands it, right? To, to build on it, right? Cause right now, I think that there's, that's why everybody's focused on pass rate. Cause that's the only thing that I'm saying. You put growth rate out there and nobody's going to know what you mean.
Right. It's, yeah, it's a hard thing to measure. I mean, it's to explain how it's measured and how it works would be difficult. But I know that's all I talk about with teachers in our building. Like, one, I don't talk about it a lot because we haven't made it. I mean, it's, it's important, but, you know, the pass rate and all that stuff. Like we're, we've really tried to stay focused on student growth. So I've just tried to stay there. And so parts of me, I've said like, if I talk about it too much, then, you know, it's, it's not that important to what we're doing. So I don't want to over talk about it either. But you're right in trying to get, I've not made that effort with the parents. You know, that might be something I should share out with the parents and say, look, this is coming out. You know, here's really what we're doing and this is what it is. But I haven't. But with teachers, I have, this is the kind of stuff that I show them online. Here's, so I don't know, internally, I've tried, that's what the message that we just keep sending. But that's a good question about whether that's the same message that should be sent externally.
Well, it could just want to be high school. I mean, it can be, I'm sure we're growing in, you know, elementary, middle school, or even more corporations, shall we member?
I would assume, I would assume so. I mean, I haven't looked at any data from any of the other.
That data would track quite well throughout. And if student growth, obviously the first guiding principle, one thing that's going to be a very, we need to do a very job is having that dashboard benchmarked for everybody to see, you know? And we've talked about that a little bit, we do have to do that because this is, this is the story more for us than just, did you pass the test? And we need to do a better job. So the strategic plan, one of the things I'm asking the committee, the senior advisor, how do we, how do we benchmark these things?
Well, this might be the, the item, the eight years that we use for the key change, right? So, so if I looked at your data is on that pass rate, we're pretty consistent. Not to say we're not going to change, but, but we're, we're keeping a statistics wise, right? We're, we're right there. But, but if we're talking about, we just passed a referendum, what did it do? What's the value to, to the community, to the schools? And if we can start communicating growth rate, and here's what we've seen and the changes we've done, because of that investment, right? That might be the, the big key that we, to keep this thing moving.
And at the, the A and down level, that, that might be a good, for us, everything's changing. So we're going to grad pathways. So really another reason at the high school level where we, we have spent no time talking about, I mean, other than trying to grow kids and, and improve their skills and work with kids at all levels and trying to help them grow, which is what that bottom 25% shows, that we, those numbers just keep growing and growing and growing. You know, we're going to move to grad pathways and it's going, we don't even know what it's going to be yet. So it could be the SAT, it could be, you know. So I've tried not to spend too much time. I'm going to show our teachers just because I want to say you're like, what you're doing is working. Like what, the, the effort you're putting in is growing kids. Like we're getting, we're showing improvement in areas. But other than that, then we're going to just move on and like start talking grad pathways and what we need to do. And so that's all, but on Tuesday, when I, next, after Thanksgiving, when we meet, and I'm going to show them some of the same stuff to just say, you know, well done, you know, this is what we've been talking about doing is trying to grow kids. But now how do we grow kids within grad pathways? You know, how, what's, what are we doing there? Because this isn't our focus anymore. You know, every meeting, and it will be today when we meet and our administrative cabinet meeting is, it'll be all about grad pathways. Every topic that we talk about will be about graduation pathways. But, but I do think that those measures, if we are going to look at some of those as a district, right, for the district or for the community to understand that like, it's not, it's not even almost realistic for us to sit and talk about, like how are we going to just jump up our pass rates in some of these areas? Like it's almost an unrealistic risk of expectation. So if I set that out for the staff, I mean, you know, when you've got kids here and your goal is to get here, like, yeah, we want to get there, but that's not, no, we want that, maybe we'll get there, but let's set some goals that are realistic to what we're going to do. We are not going to jump and see a 70% pass rate in math. Like it's just not going to happen. I mean, I've, that's, I don't know. Maybe someday it could, but incrementally or keep working on things. But, but growth can impact. Those kids can get better.
Steve, I'm really questioning that, at least with seniors yesterday, is that right?
Yes, juniors and seniors.
How many seniors are graduating, not graduating, with that, do you think were required in place?
Well, that's why we jumped into grad pathways as soon as we could, was because we were not going to rely on I-, we didn't want to I-step waiver 150 kids because the numbers were going to tell us like, we're not going to be able to get all of those kids. The state's only passing at 30%. So, you know, we jumped into grad pathways right away. So we're about, again, about the state average. So we'll have, what, 150 kids maybe pass using I-step? And then the rest out of 400?
We'll be doing grad pathways and not have to get a waiver. And then probably, I think we're down to 25 to 40 kids that we're unsure whether they'll get a waiver or not, which is a lot less than in the past.
And so right now for the kids we're going through, we have to kind of live in both worlds. So if they, you can't waiver, and we'll go through some of that, but you can't waiver certain parts of grad pathways. So they have to complete those. So we have to keep them in the I-step world. They have to take it once a year. So for some of those kids, we took it, they're taking it now. Some of them were grumbling while we were in there even asking, Mr. Anderson, why am I taking this? And, well, here's why I'm taking it. And so it's really to leave that door open to I-step. One, they could pass it. We might have kids that are there that that's a potential that they could pass it and that's, they're done. Like that's, that's great. But if not, then at least that's opened that door to that I-step waiver. We can move to grad pathways. And if for some reason grad pathways doesn't work out, then we can still waiver them through I-step. Otherwise, we can't waiver them through grad pathways in some, in some ways. So we'll talk, try to run through that. If that helps. But I'm sure knowing how students are going to graduate is probably something people should, should add, get information on. So that's, that's it. So we have a lot of kids and that's really, that's where I have to talk about Scott. He's, he is the, the person who's leading that, doing most of that work now. We all are, but Scott's doing, you know, he runs the cohort numbers. He figures out who's, you know, with the help of counselors and some different people, you know, who's, who's on track to graduate, who's already met the requirements, who's got to do grad pathways, who's doing I-step, who's in this class, who's at C9, who's at, you know? And so it's all of these things trying to put together. And he ends up meeting with a lot of them and saying like, look, you're not on track to do this. And at the end of the day, you know, he, he tracks every single kid to, to work right, right across the stage.
One of the things we're looking at, you know, we were going to have that work session. Steve was going to come in this week to drill into grad pathways. So still the plan is in January that Steve will spend, Yelensport, like an hour or 90 minutes of just grad pathway stuff. Cause it will also tie in what we're doing with a strategic plan. We had a great meeting last week, this week about pathways, what that looks like. So Steve will be coming in January. That'll also be, having back in what he said about growth, Brooke's going to do a little bit of data review, K-8. What do we do in K-8 to show that grad, that growth? So you all can see it and help that journey. Cause I think that that'll better understanding of where we're headed with the strategic plan and how we benchmark and set things up. So the grad pathways in detail will be coming right after the holidays to you all. We're going to have Steve come back and he's going to spend a long time with you talking about the different aspects that we have. But today, just a fly, 3,000 foot to say, hey, here we are.
So you could even take this, I mean, if you wanted to look at it. But you've seen this document before. So I won't, I've talked a lot already, but this is the world that we're living in right now. So we're trying to get as prepared as possible to do.
Is there a slide on this?
Uh, no, I don't think I have it on the slide there. But really we're, we're looking at, so kind of living in the I-step world. We're, but all of our conversations, every meeting we're having, everything that we're doing is about this, this stuff. So box one is, again, in green is the diploma type, which actually gets cut down. There won't be four different options. But, but it's the normal credits in getting your diploma. The red area is the employability skills. So that is the area that you cannot waiver. You have to accomplish something in that area that cannot be waived. So if a kid decides to not follow through on whatever has been decided to, to check off that box, then we cannot waiver them. The only thing you can waiver is the blue area, which then becomes like a test. So for instance, at the bottom, you have to check off one item in each of those areas. And if they meet a cut score in any of, you know, ASVAB, ACT, SAT, they do a C9 concentrator or CTE concentrator, they take three AP dual credit classes and get a C or better. There, there are a lot of different options there. But if they will attempt three of those, that's where they get, they can get a waiver. So if they were to, for instance, take the SAT, take the ACT and take the ASVAB and not pass any of them, we, they can waiver that box. It's enough attempts that they can waiver that. Kind of like if they did all the I-step remediation, took I-step every single time it was offered, showed that they worked through it, at the end, we can sign their waiver and say, yes, they, basically they gave the effort to get the diploma. They just never jumped that hurdle. So you can do that with the blue area. You cannot with the red, whatever.
So the blue area, if you have to do three different things, you can't like take the SAT three times?
Correct.
And you said in the red area, they have to do each one?
No, they just have to do one. But if they, they have to complete something, they cannot waiver that area.
So I still have the concern on that red area. So in January, I would, I'd really like be the scholar in there, but what's the impact on tracking that? You know, I just heard he's, he's got to do all this work today, right? And this, in my mind is still well over and above.
We need a person to do that. That was something I don't have to get into today. But the, the blue area is something we can track through test scores and counselors and Power School. And, you know, that's pretty much data driven. How many classes have they taken? Did they get a C? You know, that, there's some tracking there, but that's within reason. The red area, that's where you get into, you know, service projects, central nine, work-based experiences, internships, like that, that is stuff that people have a person that that does that stuff, like, that's their job. And that's, that's where we are, we get overwhelmed with community outreach and internships and...
And is it the school's responsibility to go in, say, to McDonald's and verify that Andy's working at McDonald's to meet the work-based requirement, right? Or in...
Well, there's a process for them to get, to get that information. But again, we're also talking about 400-plus kids. We're talking about a lot of them that won't get that stuff together or don't do it in a timely way, or, you know, and so...
But then also on top of that, there's data privacy and data security, because there's going to be information on those sheets, right? That we need to keep in, in mind as well, so...
Yeah. Well, we had this conversation last time, we kind of ran through this, and at that time, I wasn't, I think we'd had similar conversation about, man, there's going to need to be people to track all this stuff. It is the red box. And at that time, it was kind of like, hey, we're still, I felt like, we're still trying to figure this out, what we're going to do, how it's going to work. So some things have been on pause for a year or two, just like, let's get enough information. Let's just see how, how good or bad it will be, or how difficult, how easy will it be? And we're to the point now where we, we are experiencing that we will not be able to handle that box red without someone that oversees that program. And so...
Well, you'll see his question, uh, he, he's been in major competition with, with, with God. Are we able to get someone? He really needs somebody. Steve is doing a lot of the lead work, Scott's doing a lot of the lead work. If, if we can do that, and so that's what we want you guys to consider, what's that look like? He right now has two people, two teachers, that are helping do the top red box thing with the...
The governor's work ethic.
Governor's work ethic.
Yeah. Mary Weedman's mostly heading that up, but Ashley Jennings is helping out. We needed to start that program, to offer that to our students. So we found a free, just squeaked out a free period for a couple of them to, to basically trial what we thought we would need as a person who's just a, that takes that over. And she's just overseeing one part of it and doing a really good job of, of that. But tracking kids, pulling them in, making, you know, checking things. It's, it's been a lot, but it's also been pretty successful. So I think, and I don't know if we get into the second one that's up there or not, but there's been some discussion about how we could, I don't view...
Sure, do you want to get in?
But one, one thing we've looked at in this red area is, instead of, and it might go to, back to student growth, but how do we really want this to impact our students? Not how do we just check off boxes for the state? Which could be one approach we take, just how do we just check off the box for everybody and get done? Or how do we make it a meaningful experience and make it, you know, something where our students can grow? So one thing we've considered is a couple of schools that are fairly local to us that run, that have their seniors do what is just a senior project. And, and that would complete, in one, one program, we'd complete the red box. And as a requirement to our students, if we said, and so we've talked about going and doing the research, figuring out how they do it. Now, again, they do have a person that oversees that program, like, runs that program, which is back to, you know, would there be a way to get a person that could run that program for us? But, you know, could we tell every kid, "You need to do this," and as a project, it is a service project, or it is a work-based project, but it's one program? Instead of us searching for 15 different internships and how are we going to, you know, what service projects can we set up for kids? So instead of looking at it in terms of, okay, we've got 450 kids, we need to find something to do, it's, we've got one program for 450 kids to do. And so that's something we've been really tossing around, is can we maybe embrace that model? And then, within that would be stuff that they're doing over their junior, senior year, which is talking, you know, building a resume, talking about interviewing, looking at, which is the other thing that we brought back to the picture, employability skills, you know? Where that, it's more of a program that they're getting all of those things, that we say, this is a learning experience, a valuable learning experience for all of our kids. And we don't search for 450 different ways to do it. We have one way for 450 kids. But, but within that, they can choose what they're passionate about to go do a project they could take on. So I, we're still talking about that, but I think we're going to sometime soon do some research on what, what it's worth for us to do something like that. Which I think would simplify this red box for us a great deal. And still provide opportunities for students to get a meaningful experience, so. Then the blue area is something to do, so. Well, maybe taking up too much time.
No, no, I just want to honor the board. You guys have, what time do y'all have to get out of here? You guys talking? Huh?
I have to leave, 30.
Okay. So...
The only last thing I'll throw in is, like, we're talking as a building right now. We started a project my first year, when I went to the, to all the teachers and said, "What do we need to be doing in this building? Like, what's it need?" What came out of it was this employability rubric. We got to the end of that first year and started talking about implementing it, and I put the whole thing on pause until the teachers, I was like, "Okay, great work, but we need to figure out grad pathways first and where something like this might fit in, because it dominates everything that we're doing." So I said, "I promise you, I'm not forgetting about this, but until we figure out what we're doing with grad pathways, we, we're not going to just implement something to implement something." So we're going to wait to see where it fits in. So we're now in the discussion with our teachers about, okay, how does this fit in? How does this become part of what we do in the building? How does this fit into math, how's it fit into science? So we're opening up that discussion about where this conversation is going on in our building all the time, in all of our classes. And I can report back to some point where that's, you know, but now I'm back to teachers saying, "I didn't forget about that in year one, like, it's, it's here now. Let's figure out where it fits with what we're trying to accomplish in the building." So that's why I want to show that to you. We're, we have very minimal discussion to this point on that.
I really like, this is really, the one, one thing, just as I glanced over it though, it, it looks like it is highlighting the negative or the lack of negative.
Okay.
And there's no acknowledgement, like, technology, right? So I've seen some students that, not only do they use the Chromebooks, but they're using technology, some of the apps on it, better than others, right? And that really is, if you think about employability, right? Going out into industry, you're already well ahead of the competition. A little bit more harder to, to measure.
So a measurement that's not working from, like, your minimum expectation down to, like, you're exceeding or you're...
Right. I think it, right, right here, I mean, there's no challenge.
Yeah.
And then the challenge is, I'm not, I'm not doing something wrong.
Right.
Right? But what's the challenge, the push we need to hit that next level? Would be the only suggestion that I'm...
Yeah, I didn't, I, yeah, that, that really, I think, was our conversation, is like, what do we expect of?
And, and also...
And then how does that measure when it's not being seen? But I, we didn't have a lot of discussion about what's that measure? That's above and beyond what we would expect.
Yeah, and you know, just from an industry, those last two, being prepared, the use of technology, you know, being prepared, you're coming into a meeting like today, and you've got the information down. Not that I've got the fewer incidents, you know, just kind of the reverse of it, right? Focus on like...
Yeah. And, and I would say that, like, part of what we're doing with this is we're coming back and looking at it again. Like, we stopped, just kind of, this was kind of rough draft, and we just stopped at a point. So if we, we actually are planning discussion, we come back and look at it again and say, we love, where we left off, what, is this really what we want? Or, because this is, this is somewhere for us to work from. We're just looking at, and really even implementing, I don't know that we're looking at it in terms of, like, every teacher's got to do this, this is some big program, it's going to be, what we're looking at or talking about was more of like, okay, math, how, how could this fit into what you're doing? How can this, you know, maybe it's a grade, maybe it's not a grade. Maybe it's, you know, classroom expectation, maybe it's, you know, a project, maybe it's... But that, if everybody's talking about those things, it becomes the conversation around the building and all of our different groups about, you know, what does it mean to be prepared and employable and all of those kind of things, so.
I just had this intern a couple of weeks ago, we've got a good party, I, I can't be in, I'm not allowed. We started this. Right? I, you know, I, I'm going to be on party, I can't, I can't, I can't be in, right? And really, fuck, that was okay to come in, because I'm going to be drinking and having a good time. I, I can't start another one. But that's, you know, that's this generation that's coming in. And, and so that's why I think, I think this is a great to put in front of the kids, that those are, those attributes right there, those skills are spot on for what, from an industry side, that I think those kids ought to be thinking about. And how it impacts, you know, them going into any field.
And what we'd like to do is, if we were to adopt, like, the pro, the project idea, the senior project, you know, how does something like this fit into, like, not just a senior project, but maybe like a two-year process of, like, junior year, you're talking about certain things. And then senior, it leads to that senior year where you're doing some kind of project. But are you talking about, you know, preparedness, resumes, interviews? You know, all of those kind of things that are talking employability-type stuff? Where does that, where does something like this fit into maybe the conversations at freshman, sophomore year, but then in the junior years? You know, so how does it, how does it just kind of flow in our building? That really what we're talking about is, even if you're going post-secondary education and beyond, like, all of these skills are necessary to do that. So all the skills that we felt, you know, maybe didn't need to be talked about that much, they were maybe accepted norms are, are not, are not, so. But, well, the other stuff, I don't think I should, I don't know that I should really dive into. This is some other grad pathway stuff. This document is just what we, like, CTE concentrators, just real briefly. Everything that's in green is what we offer as courses. Everything that's in blue is what C9 offers. If it's in red, there's kind of a key on the back at some point, if you wanted to look through it. I made a couple of notes on there as well. But we're just trying to track pathways that kids can go down or currently are. And what, man, just trying to keep track of what all is offered out there, what our kids would have offers. Well, I could go through that more at a later time.
In January, we'll, we'll really go down to that, too.
And then another paper there is just what we offer from a dual credit AP standpoint, just to get a good look at, you know, that's the college, more of the college-bound view, with just what all, and kids would have to take three of those and get a C or better. And we do offer a wide range of things. So I thought I would give you a look at just, we're talking about different career paths and college paths, what all is offered in our building. And I could go more in depth of that at another time. So these other questions are, are things that we've talked about in our admin meetings. So what are our community partnerships look like? You know, we're starting to get even community partners that are reaching out to us. We're trying, the manufacturing day we put on was, seemed to be a success. We had a lot of good feedback from that. We'll continue to do that. I think that's good outreach to Franklin, and, and our students seem to enjoy that. We talked about social workers and what place that, you know, we're already starting that conversation about, you know, if that's coming to our building, eventually, what does that look like? What's that role? What are our needs, kind of doing assessments of our building there? Then, you know, just different things that we've talked about in our building, all-in programs, like, things that different people in our district are talking about as well. So I don't know that there's too much, is that the last slide?
Yeah. Can you give the board the student, the pigeon pig, pigeon clay, after the manufacturing? Can you share that story?
Uh, well, we, we had the manufacturing day, and we really had kids, I'd set up something where they had to go, which each station that they went to, they had to go to at least five, and then there were just questions they had to ask and get answers for. So one of the students had gone to pige, pigeon, say it right, and just got in conversation, asking questions, so they got to talking a little bit. And then just that next day, he emailed me and said, "Hey, do you have a contact for them? Like, I'd just like to know more." So I contacted them and said, "Do you mind me giving out your information to the students so they can contact you?" "Yes, do that." And by the next week, he had an internship set up to go over there. So that just happened kind of naturally without us even, like, having some kind of formal process for doing that. They just started talking, and they were like, "Oh, yeah, we'll come over here." And so we ended up getting that worked out real easily. So it's a success story, so how that could happen? The problem is, how do you do that 400 different ways? And so that is really the issue we're going to run into, is we want to incentivize that, and we want that kind of stuff to happen, but is it manageable? Or is it even reasonable for us to think that that's, that's a model that could cover, you know, all of our kids? So we've got to try to build those. And then NSK's reached out about wanting to set up an internship program. So I think regardless of how we attack box two in the red, like, we could still do all of those things. And still, you know, if we were to do a senior project, they could still do those, and we could still have those programs for all of those kids to do stuff. It just, we wouldn't be forced to try and find 400 kids a spot to go intern somewhere or... So some of those things are just things we need to do a better job of, and we will, and we're going in the right direction on that.
Steve got, Steve got a lot of kudos from the Chamber of Manufacturing Group for what we did that day. They went, uh, a week before to another school, I might remember the day before, but it was in a very short window, and they're just like, "Oh, my goodness. What you guys did was amazing." So Steve really did that. You know, he won't to, he won't stand up here and tell you he did it, but I'll, I'll sit here and tell you. He put this thing together, created the environment, and it was very good. He also limited it. He said, "Listen, it wasn't a free-for-all, it wasn't a cattle call for everybody." He said, "If you're in math and science," it was very orchestrated. So outstanding Chamber at the meeting the other day. They've already reached out, and they're going to do another one next year and look to see what that looks like. So I just want to publicly thank Steve for that, because it really made a little difference, and he was the mastermind behind it, so.
Well, Steve.
There you go. There's a lot of conversation in the community about that, so I think there's an appetite on both sides to have that kind of stuff happening. So I think we can just keep pushing that, grow that. I don't think, questions about, that's a lot of stuff. But I do think that as, as a board, though, it's a lot of stuff that I can keep giving you information on, or if you ever want information about, let me know. Because though, that's what's coming, I mean, all of that stuff's what's coming, and that's what, you know, parents are going to have questions about, and it's how our kids are going to graduate. So if you ever have any questions, let me know.
It, it starts with the freshman class this year, but it has to.
Yeah. But our goal still has been to have this year's sophomore class go through the program we would like to design. So if we would decide to go into this, like, senior project idea, I would really like to run that with our sophomore group, because I would like to run it a year in advance and work those kinks out before we're down on the class where it's like, okay, we have to do it for this group. So then it's a little more time. I mean, it seems like it's still a couple of years away, but we've got a lot of things in place, but we still have some major pieces we've got to make decisions on pretty quick, because if we're going to do something like that, we've got to get to work on it, plan it out. And I'm, I'm really looking, I look at it as our sophomore group is the group that we need to support.
Steve, sure. Will we, will we even talk at some point about the number one goal?
Uh, yes, that's why he, I asked him, because if we get to hear about it, I want you to hear about it. So yes, we're going to talk about, I think at G, where I'd like to know where you, where you all stay in.
It makes, makes sense.
Yeah, he, he is doing a lot of lead work. I need Steve to, he needs to be two years out helping that senior project or whatever we decide, and he just needs some extra hands.
I think he does.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to pose to you all, so as we talked about staffing and that cycle of staffing for us. But yeah, we need help, he needs help. It, it's a huge, it's a huge burden, and the state, state gifted us with, he's created a great package and opportunity for our kids, we just need to help, so, yeah. So January, that's okay, because I think the next eight weeks will be okay, just knowing that where we're headed with that. Because I assume, like, one of the teachers locally would probably be the, the tapped person that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have, I think we have people in place that can, can do this stuff and help them. And that's why in some ways, we, we've kind of tried to do that, even if it's just a period here or there, try to have people doing some things just to see. Because really, we probably could have said two years ago, like, we, it would be nice to have someone to do all of this stuff, but really didn't want to go, some of it's been good for me just to, to learn it and figure it all out. Make sure that honestly, if we, if we were going to get a person that we really needed, and now I think it's just a point where I, like, I don't know if we can really implement this on a large scale without... Right now, we're just working with, like, 100 kids. And it, it's not, I, I do believe that we need a person to, to take on. And again, it's that, you brought, you were right, you hit it right away, it's that red area that, that somebody needs to just take and run with and be able to lead that charge.
Something about, is it a person at the high school, or is it a person out of central office to do that? Where's the best spot, where's the best spot?
I, I think here, I mean, I, I, yeah, because it's going to require a lot of meetings with kids and organizing of, you know, meetings and planning and bunch of time.
Maybe still meet with the kids, but I'm thinking budget-wise, it's that. Just consider it, if there's, put it in...
Those are really the questions, all those back to in, in January. So January, we're gonna do the work session, uh, right before the board meeting, so we'll do it in that five o'clock window. We'll have dinner, and then have you, have you guys come in. Steve will be up first, followed by Brooke, and then we'll go into the regular board meeting. And then in February, we also have the full-day financial extravaganza.
I know, you guys are all...
Yeah, yeah.
I like to talk about you, bros.
And then the only other thing, uh, just what, thank you, Steve, for this.